This time we will call the meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Darrell.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Landwehr.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Here.
Trustee Wassiger.
Here.
President Anderson.
Here. At this time if you'd all rise for the Sledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Landwehr.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we will have a presentation of the accreditation renewal for the Heartland Police Department by the WIAG. The presentation by our chief, Chief Misco, related to the department's annual report, and presentation of a donation to the police department from Hoggers Pub by its owner, Jeff Anson. We will start with the presentation by the WIAG.
Okay, thank you. The Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, WIAG. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present today. I believe this is my second time out here. Three years ago I was out here when the accreditation was approved by the WIAG Board, and I was very pleased with what was going on, obviously, here in Heartland. The Heartland PD has an excellent reputation. Former Chief Bob Roche was leading the department at that time, and now you have a new police chief, but you still have the great, great service to the community. And so I'm here today on behalf of the WIAG Board to present a plaque to Chief Misco. But I do want to say a few words before we do the presentation about WIAG, what we're about, what we're interested in doing, how much it exists across the state of Wisconsin. It's pretty rare, quite frankly. You're in the top 10, 10, 15 percent of police departments. There are roughly 550 police departments in the state of Wisconsin, and there are about 35, 40 that are actually accredited. So this is a major achievement for the city of Heartland. You should be very proud of your police department as they go forward and, you know, enforce the standards that you expect as a community. Tell you about who I am. My name is Stan Stojkovic. I'm the dean of the Helen Bader School of Social Welfare at the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. I sit on the WIAG Board. I'm actually the longest-tenured commissioner, going all the way back to 1998, sitting on the board. But I'm here to represent the four-year colleges, but in the larger context, the WIAG Board. And that board is made up of a number of commissioners, all of whom, or many of whom, have law enforcement experience, have educational experiences, have experiences in the criminal justice system. It's a very, very august body, and we meet once a month and we pass policies and procedures and standards. And the standards are the core of what WIAG is all about. We are the only law enforcement accreditation agency in the state of Wisconsin. There is national accreditation through the Commission on the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, known as CALEA. That has been around since the late 1970s. We've been around since the late 1990s. So we've got about 20 years here in the state of Wisconsin, but we're very proud with what we've done. Again, we've got about 36 accredited in our major, main program. We have another 23, 25 who are seeking what we call core verification accreditation. Those are for smaller departments. They tend to be a stepping stone to accreditation. When you add those two together, you're talking about 60 to 65 agencies across the state of Wisconsin. The process is arduous. It's not easy. Chief Misco and the accreditation manager who runs the accreditation process for the department, it takes time, and you have to commit to it. And it's not something that you do in a discreet sense. In other words, you do it by this date and then you're done for three years. Accreditation is like working out. You have to keep on doing it if you want to sustain the benefits. So we're very fortunate that the Heartland PD went through this process. There are roughly 242 possible standards that we have. Heartland PD, those that were applicable, was 204, and it was very well done. And in a few moments, I'll read a couple of lines from the report, the actual assessment report that was given to the WIAG Commission when we voted to approve the accreditation. I'd like to first congratulate a number of people here in Heartland. Obviously, the city fathers and the men and women that make up this village board. You provide the support to law enforcement. Without that support, they would be nothing. And so that support, both financial, but in terms of time, the kinds of effort, the commitment to the police department is very essential to its effectiveness. And it was very clear in our assessor's report when they came out here that they had a community that was really engaged in law enforcement. And we thought that that was an outstanding contribution to the community, but also the community to the police department. It's a symbiosis. It's reciprocity that goes back and forth. I want to congratulate Chief Torin Misco for leading the department and providing this kind of solid leadership that you really need to have accreditation go forward. But I also want to thank the accreditation manager, Vicky Doberton. I don't know if Vicky's here today or not.
Vicky did not make it.
Did not make it today. That's the heart and soul of accreditation, is that accreditation manager, because he or she makes sure that the officers are up to snuff and they got the page proofs and all the things that we require to approve accreditations. The comments from the community and the agency is very positive. Just a few comments I'd like to mention. The agency, our assessors that came in during a site visit ultimately concluded that the services provided to the city of Heartland was just outstanding. The relationships within the department, between the union, for example, and the police administration, is outstanding. Many people testified to the fact that the relationships were positive going forward, and also with the fundamental concern about community and community safety and representing the community in a fair, fair, reasonable way. So what I'd like to do is to ask Chief Misco to come up here, please, and accept this award. I would like to read the plaque that we have given the department, and then reserve any kind of comments that you might have for me or questions regarding the process.
I'm going to ask Captain Kelsey to join me as well, because she did a lot of the work towards this accreditation.
Very good. Let me just read this here. It says, "Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, challenging Wisconsin's law enforcement agencies to achieve excellence. Be it hereby known that the Heartland Police Department has fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence by its compliance to a broad body of standards deemed essential to the protection of life, safety, and the rights of the citizens it serves, and has exemplified the best professional practices in the conduct of its responsibilities, and therefore is hereby, upon the recommendation of the members of the governing board of the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, awarded this certificate of accreditation dated December 10, 2019. It is recognized as a Wisconsin-accredited law enforcement agency for a period of three years to December 10, 2021. Signed by our president, Greg Peterson, the WIAG Board." Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Put a quick picture, Stan?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Challenge is the best.
Very good. Chief, I don't know if you have some things that you'd like to say?
No, I would like to thank the WIAG Board for doing what they do. For any of those that aren't familiar with WIAG, as Stan kind of described what they do, but really in a nutshell, it keeps us current with what the best practices are in law enforcement services. I think state of Wisconsin is a nationwide leader when it comes to providing a good law enforcement service. I think WIAG recognizes that. That's why we don't settle for the CALEA standard, but we go and take it to the WIAG standard, and we really are forced on to stay with those best practices and provide a good service. So I joke, I was on just a couple days, and we had our MAC. So just a couple days on as the new chief, and I think I told Deputy Chief Colura to give the MAC panel a tour of the department along with myself, so that we could all learn what we were doing and where we were going and what was all about. But that led to another 30, 60 days of hard work getting through to our actual accreditation. And as Stan pointed out, it's a very arduous process. They're very detailed. They go through all our policies and procedures. They have accreditation standards that line up with those. And it's not just that we have it written down on paper and that we say we do that. They actually need to see it done in our incident reports or some type of proof that we're actually doing what we say. So it's not just lip service, the saying we do good things. It's actually because we do best practice when it comes to providing a law enforcement service.
Very good. Thank you. Chief, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if there's any questions or comments that you have that I, of me, or that I need to take back to the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group. I'm more than happy to respond on their behalf.
Thank you for coming out, you know, and taking the time to do this, and obviously to our captain, our chief. Thank you, guys, for everything you do, and this is a representation that you're telling us things are going well, and it sounds like they actually are. So that's a very good thing. But we already knew that, but it's always nice to see some, something solidify that, and I appreciate everything you guys do on that board. Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you. Chief, you had some other things you wanted to?
Sure. I'll go through the list here. I would be remiss, though, on the WIAG. I know Vicky Doberton was brought up, but she is our accreditation manager, and she does the lion's share of the work. She's the one that provides and makes sure that we're following each one of those accreditation standards and provides that proof that we're actually doing it. Very tedious process, very labor-intensive, but again, it keeps us following best practice. So she deserves a lot of the credit to keep us compliant, or proving that we are compliant, at least. Moving on to our next item, as I completed our police department annual report, I know electronic copy was sent out, and then I also provided each of the trustees with a copy, their own copy of the annual report. I don't plan on reading that line by line, but just to kind of go over some quick things throughout the annual report, you'll see on page three that 2018 highlights where Chief Bagan retired from the police department. Deputy Chief Colura served as our interim chief for a period of several months until ultimately I was hired as the chief of police in September. We hired a new police officer, Officer Gergel, in June, and he's doing great. Got through his first six months, got through his field training program, and he's doing great on solo patrol. Officer Joswick in Greenwood were recognized at our Police and Fire Commission meeting with a lifesaving award this year, or in 2018. Officer Haig was part of our suburban critical incident team, or SWAT team, and he retired off that unit after several years of service as a tactical officer. And then Officer Thomas Bagan completed his one-year probation period. And then finally, as you just heard Stan, we got our accreditation through the WIAG Board in December, and that is valid for a three-year period, so through December of Next page, we talk about some of the cooperative efforts. Again, I'm not going to read through that line by line, but a lot of the things like the suburban critical incident team or that SWAT team, our major investigations unit, our suburban mutual aid response team, our SMART teams. These are a lot of collaborative efforts that the Heartland Police Department participates in to provide the best service to the community of Heartland. We're suburban law enforcement. We do a great job day to day, but these are cost-effective ways to provide a large amount of resources when needed. So it's just another way that we work together as a law enforcement community to provide the best service possible for the village. Going on in a couple pages, we go through our vision and mission statement, go through our department hierarchy, our command staff, and organization structure. Each of the different shifts are, the officers that are signing each of those shifts are outlined, pictured, and when they started their service with the village of Heartland Police Department. And then towards the back of that annual report, we actually go through some statistical analysis for the past 10 years. You'll see that our calls for service were up as of 2018 from years prior. We definitely are on that same glide scope for 2019, even though it's pretty premature, but we're still headed in that large volume of call for service, or increased volume of call for service. And then just some of the traffic, or some of the statistics that I'll point out is traffic accidents that we responded to were 123. There were 2,878 traffic contacts, which resulted in 1,357 traffic citations throughout the year. We had 102 state prosecutions, or when we refer charges to the district attorney's office, 10 emergency detentions. And then we added actually a category new for 2018 I thought was important to add, because we actually work with probation and parole, where we have an agent one day a week come up to our police department and meet with clients, their offenders or clients, as they would call them, up in the police department once a week that are from this area. And we work collaboratively with the agent with information sharing to ensure that they're following their rules of supervision. But when they're not, that's when these probation holds come into effect. And I wanted to capture that because that does take up some resources from the police department to ensure a safe community, because that means we're now taking that offender into custody, doing any type of follow-up investigation if needed, and then ultimately transporting that individual to the Wausau County Jail. And then finally, I just wanted to go over quickly, at the end of the report, we go through some of our complaints that we received in 2018, and also what compliments we received as a police department. And as you see, the compliments far outweigh the complaints, but any law enforcement service provided, you are going to get complaints from time to time. We had two in 2018. One was in regards to a domestic violence investigation where the individual that was part of the investigation, I guess, didn't get the outcome that he thought was appropriate. And after an investigation of that complaint, he actually withdrew his complaint, because I think he understood why the investigation led to what it led to ultimately. And then the other complaint we got was ultimately unfounded, was in regards to a traffic violation complaint. Where basically two individuals were both at fault, and a third party then didn't appreciate the fact that if the lady followed through with her complaint, that both parties were going to receive a citation. So she ultimately decided not to, but then this third-party person thought that wasn't appropriate, even though that was what the investigation led to. So they, third-party filed a complaint on behalf of the traffic violator that didn't want anything done. So again, an unfounded-type complaint. But then, as you'll see, compliments, 36 compliments through 2018, 16 different employees, six department-wide compliments, and these range from just professionalism, traffic stop encounters, assistance provided to other agencies, and just any type of service call that we go on throughout the year. And if anyone's got any questions, I want to keep it short, but just kind of go through quickly and point out some of the highlights.
I don't know. I think you guys are doing great.
And I'm always available, so if you have questions, don't be afraid to ask.
Compliments are a little low. Got to get that every month from talking about you guys, so.
Good. No, yeah, and we document as people send in cards or call into the police department, but I do agree, we probably don't capture every single one that comes through. And some of the officers know that that's part of their job, and believe it or not, they don't, they love getting the compliments, they just don't like sharing them. They feel that it's important enough hearing from the person themselves. So that's always a challenge as well.
Thank you, Chief, for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief, that picture of you, did you get that from Alina?
Which one?
That's in the book.
In the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
There wasn't one, it's on the wall, so come on.
I had to give you a bit, not on.
I thought it was a good picture.
You have one other item that you would like to address.
I do. I'd like to call trustee Anson. I know he had done some, held an event at Hoggers Pub where he actually raised some funds for the police department, and I believe he wanted to make a presentation for that donation. I think it's important to show that this community supports police department, and there's a lot of different ways of doing that. And Trustee Anson put some time and effort into it and was able to come together and make this donation, this generous donation to the police department.
Do you want to walk or something? You jerk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. It was, it was very easy to do. It was Christmas Eve. I wasn't going to open a bar Christmas Eve, and I decided to open it from 1:00 in the afternoon until 3:00 in the afternoon. And my comment to my patrons was, no tips for me. Anything that you give me, I'm going to donate to the police department for items that they need outside the budget. And we received, just shy of 200, they made it $200. And that's only in two hours. So my point is, it's very, very easy in this community to get people to donate to our first responders, to our village, to charities, and anybody can do it. And I encourage everybody to do it, because it's easy, it's fun, and we give it to a great cause. Thank you.
And the police department appreciates it. Thank you.
Still open for five hours this year.
This year, no. Just for three.
Well, still open for five next time.
Oh, five next time, yeah.
Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you.
He's going right to Ryan. There you go.
It works.
He'll take care of that for me.
With that, for any items that are not on the agenda, do we have anybody from the public that would like to step forward and speak to items that are not on the agenda? Seeing as there is no one that wants to speak to items that are not on the agenda, we will move to our first official item of the agenda. That is not just a presentation, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the February 11, 2019 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Our second item is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of...
100?
There's vouchers. Go ahead, you can say it if you want to. I didn't have it up.
I move we pay the bills for 177,092. 87?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers, as stated.
I have questions.
Yep.
Is it time? Okay.
It's discussion.
I have a couple of questions, and they're under Public Works. The first one is, when did you hire Irish Dance for Adults?
What page?
It's on page four, three-quarters of the way down, $96. It's got Irish Dance for Adults.
I think that's mis-
Clearly, that's miscoded.
Miscoded.
I just was asking if maybe you guys-
Although it would be hilarious to see the guys at the shop dancing irishly.
And it sounds like that should have been under recreation?
I just, I'm asking, it was there or not?
No, 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 because the public doesn't know when we just say it was-
And the other is, on the same page, and I don't mean to offend anybody at the Milwaukee Journal, but I see a subscription for that for $267. The Freeman is our paper that we do all of our stuff with. Why don't we get the Freeman instead?
I guess because we've always got the Daily Journal at the shop and at the hall.
Okay. I just, I mean, because a Freeman would have the Heartland issues in it and that. I just think it would be-
I know we do get the reporter also.
Oh, we get both?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I just didn't see it on here? Okay. Okay, so you get both of them?
I'm, we get the reporter and the journal. I'm not sure about, like, country reporter?
Well, the Freeman's in the office up there, isn't it?
I don't think we get the Freeman at the shop. We get it at the hall.
Okay. I just, I just thought, because we don't really do much in that paper, I just thought the Freeman would be more informational for you guys.
We can get the Freeman.
Well, whatever. I just had a question about that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
I read it.
Any other questions?
No.
So that item, that was miscoded. I'm sure we'll get that corrected.
Yep.
And then, does anybody else have anything that they would like to add for the discussion regarding the vouchers? It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have our different licenses and permits. What we have are bartenders' licenses that expire on June 30, 2020. These are for Randall Block and Bridget Lindner.
I so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two licenses. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is a temporary Class B beer/wine license. The applicant is St. Charles Congregation, St. Charles Parish. 313 Circle Drive is the address. It's for a fish fry. It's March 8th, March 15th, March 22nd, March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th.
I so move we approve the temporary Class B beer and wine license.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Question. Darlene, I thought, didn't we have it where somebody could only have three a year?
This is considered a, an event-
As one?
Yes, even though it's multiple dates. It's one application.
Okay, so I'm just jumping ahead here. The person that's going to be their licensed bartender, I thought that was only for 24 hours, for a 24-hour period like we get for the street dance?
No, it's for longer than that. It will be straw and defense.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
It all falls under Lent.
Yeah, and then you're dead.
For the-
Yep.
Liturgical year.
So we could have our street dance for a month and a half?
If you can get it past this body.
You can close the street down for a month and a half, and you're going to run it.
Yeah. Okay.
And then suppose the chamber, yeah.
So any, any other?
No.
Discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That license is granted. I'm guessing that this goes right along with that license, but we have a temporary operator's license for Nancy Vandalarsha. Thank you.
Vandalarsha, right.
I move we approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that temporary operator's license. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have an application for a restricted species permit. This is for Christine Pickens, 686 Briar Cliff Court. She wants to have three small dogs. The village ordinance says that you are only to have two dogs.
Right. And a number of years ago, as the board will remember, we adjusted the code so that if you were going to have more than that, the board had the opportunity to grant that using our, quote, "restricted species" permit.
My understanding there's been no bites, injuries, or anything from the three small dogs, and they've all received their vaccinations.
And they're old.
And they're all fenced in, and so, you know.
They're seniors, yes.
I so move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the restricted species permit, allowing for a third small dog at that residence. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. All three dogs will be allowed. The next item on the agenda, we have the second reading of a bill for an ordinance, 211, 2019, and ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to court. As you'll recall, this is, this is the second reading. We went through this last month, and I kind of talked that there was no need to really rush it forward and get into suspending of the rules, but this is that second reading.
I move we suspend the rules of balance on the second reading.
Suspend the rules first.
Suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules of the body. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
No.
Now I move we adopt bill for an ordinance, 211, 2019.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance, 211, 2019. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Okay.
The-
Sorry.
That's okay. I'll come into my own side. You said it already.
Probably here.
Okay. Okay, so now we have items that were referred from the February 18th Plan Commission meeting. First, we have a consideration of a motion to approve site and building plans for office additions for advanced disposal at 559 Progress Drive. That was recommended approval from the Plan Commission.
In the parking room, they, was it a lot that they moved into?
They, they removed two parking spaces.
Just two spots.
But it, it sort of flagged the issue in general. There are a lot of vehicles that report to advanced facilities in the industrial park. They have this property, which is really two adjoining properties, and then they have another one that is a transfer station facility where they store trucks and end up having a lot of parking there as well. A hundred and something employees arrive at this facility every day. So there was a conversation about parking. In the end, as you saw in my note, the Plan Commission recommended approval, but they have to replace the minor, the two parking places they lost.
And that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be-
No, and in fact, they talked about looking at ways to add some more, just to relieve, relieve some of the congestion. Anyway, but it is two small office additions, about a thousand square feet, really allows them to move some people in and create a better environment for their customers as well, so.
Is this the first reading, then?
This is a move to, this is ready for approval, if you're ready.
I move that we approve the advanced disposal expansion.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the addition for advanced disposal at 559 Progress Drive. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is consideration of actions related to rezoning of the property at 345 Cottonwood Avenue from a B3 central business mixed-use district to an RS3 single-family residential district. This was discussed at the, this was discussed at the Plan Commission.
Do you want me to comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Please.
So this was discussed at the Plan Commission, as President Fanner still pointed out, the Plan Commission is currently a little bit divided on this particular issue, but asks that the village board set the public hearing that the village board would be required to have for a month from now, so that you'll have the opportunity to notify the public and take their comments at that time. The Plan Commission will come back to the matter at its next meeting on the, do the math, 18th of, of the month of March, and will attempt to come to a closure and make some recommendation to the village board. As President Fanner still noted, this is a request to take a property that is currently zoned B3 or business, our downtown business district. The parcel is located, I'll give you a couple of benchmarks. This great coffee shop is in front, is in a small strip mall. This property is to the north of that, across the street from Snap Fitness now, or used to be Bogars, kind of in that area. There are three residential properties in that location. One of them is being used as a single family, one of them is a three-family, and this particular one, which used to hold an office use, is used for, well, nothing right now, it's vacant. So that is the basics of the proposal. Like I said, the Plan Commission will come back to it at their next meeting and attempt to make a recommendation to the village board. So all I would ask from you for tonight is two things. One, set that public hearing for a month from now, and two, just for formality's sake, do the first reading of the ordinance, which is currently in a draft form, waiting for the Plan Commission to make its recommendation.
Is that on the opposite side of where Restrick was in?
Correct, it's across the street.
I mean, in that same building.
It's across the street from where Bogars used to be.
Oh, across the street, okay.
May I make one com- a comment?
You can, I just, go ahead.
Go ahead, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, I want to make sure it's clear to the board that this was not recommended approval from the, from the Plan Commission, even though it's at us. Now, because keep in mind, there's, and I think I'm right on this, there's two touches per board. So it's Plan Commission, Village Board, Plan Commission, Village Board, and if all of a sudden a motion is made. I don't want to get too far into discussion, but you'll understand why I'm making sure.
No, I just wanted to make a comment about it. This building was built as a house. It looks like a house, and I think it's one of the nicer properties we have downtown as far as, it's, it's very pleasing to the eye. It's been renovated, I believe, and I, I just want to make those comments about it.
Yeah, to add to that, the inside is still a house?
Yes.
So, it was, it was used as an office, but it's really a house.
But it can't really be used as an office.
And Donna's right, it makes the property next to it look awful.
Okay.
Wait, answer that.
Okay. We don't have a motion, though, guys.
I make a motion-
That's right.
I make a motion to set the public hearing for March 25th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Anybody got anything? I do. This building, though, being a house, has been a business for a very long time. This house that has been run as a business has not a backyard but a parking lot, has lines in the parking lot, it's in a business district, it's an area that Heartland has been pushing to make a business district and is part of the Business Improvement District, and is right now taxed as a Business Improvement District property. There is a direction and trajectory which we are going on, and I can understand the plight of the person that is requesting it, and while I do, I mean, I do let that weigh on me in thinking about what's for the betterment of the village in the long run, especially as we go out and try to bring more businesses, more workers, and create wonderful things, it is my opinion that it is not the best move for the village, though maybe the best move right in this small gap of time to say, okay, let's make this a house. I, I don't feel like it's in the best interest of the village, and I feel that this is not, I feel that this is coming to us not for what's in the best interest of the village, but what's in the best interest of the current owners and their situation, but not the village as a whole, and I hope that people take that, I hope people really, really take that to heart. We try to plan in the village, and I am, everybody knows, I mean, I am open to saying a lot of times that the Plan Commission, or the Plan, our comprehensive plan is a little bit wrong. In this case, especially when there's been talks at various different boards where we're really trying to work on Cottonwood to help those businesses that are down there, if we're going to start going down with houses, we don't want to make it look like the Business Improvement District, but this, again, is my opinion, I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong, there's no way that I can prove that I'm right, but I believe that I'm correct on the trajectory of where the village was heading, and I personally also believe that there is going to be a very difficult time selling this property as a residence when you have a big slab of blacktop in back, which is a commercial property. Furthermore, this property was paid for, and in, in a sense leased, this is the old Edward Jones property, is my understanding, and it's not our choice and it's not up to us, but there was some money coming in from Edward Jones, and it's more of a situation that's going on between some people that's, that's causing it to come forward. Currently, there is the ability for the person that owns it to live in the property, they just have to keep the front corner portion of it, on the lower portion of it, storefront or commercial use, so they could still live there, but that's my opinion, and that does not mean I'm correct, I'm just giving it openly so that I'm not, you know, I don't want to-
Were they living in there too, when the realtor had that, or the stockbroker? I thought, I thought it never changed, was it? They weren't living, it was always a business.
It you, no, it used to be a house, and it was best for the people at the time to come forward and say they want it rezoned because they want it to be a business.
No, but Edward was in it, that was, I, I thought.
No, they, they weren't, but what I'm, what I'm saying is from a Heartland perspective, at one point, that was a house, it wasn't really part of downtown, and they came forward to the village board, not necessarily the current owners, but someone came forward to Heartland and said, this would be great if we made this a business property. Now, it's a situation where it's not working so good as a business property, so it's like, let's change it back to residential, and I'm just, I want people to think about that.
Well, I'm saying it was both before when Jones got in there.
I-
Or they were using it that way.
No.
I mean, sure, they weren't living in there, nobody would live-
Currently, they can, you can live in a residential, or in a commercial property that is under the B3?
Correct.
B3 is mixed use. You can live in the back portion of the property, and I'll give you an example, Ordways. Ordways used to live in their property, but the bar was in the front kind of of the building, but they also lived there. That's also a similar situation, B3.
Oh, no, I was just curious, because I, I knew it was a house.
Currently, it can be lived in.
And I knew Jones had the front, I always thought somebody was still in the other parts.
Yeah, and I don't, it's just my opinion.
I would also like to make a comment for the record, that this property was on the market for sale and could not be sold. Now, I don't know the details of what they were asking, but they, no, there were no buyers for that.
Okay.
She did, they, it was, they, the owners did try to sell it.
Right.
And that was as a business. And is there, I mean, if, if the person who wants to move into it were to put some dirt over that blacktop and put some grass down, would that satisfy some of the issues?
No, they, they could do it, I'm thinking of the longevity of the Heartland, I mean, Mr. Bertrand has had his building up for a long time, and there's been no buyers for that either, but I don't think it'd be a good house.
Well, I'm, the, my understanding is our comp plan is a, is our suggestion for how we perceive the village to be moving, but it's not set in stone.
No, no, it's a guide.
It's a guide.
It's a guide.
But that was brought up at one point, that it's, it's in our comprehensive guides or our books, so that's what we have to do, well, no.
And I, I didn't just say that, I simply said that it was my opinion-
But it was set by someone.
That the trajectory of where we were headed with Cottonwood, from Piggly Wiggly all the way down to the intersection, and then it goes a little farther way down that same road, even though it changes names, down to the flower shop, and then up East Capital, it was becoming more of a business district. I'm only giving my opinion, which we're all entitled to do, it doesn't mean we're always going to share it.
I just think it's the wrong building to, I mean, if you're going to start taking down buildings, let's, let's, let's redo some of the old office buildings down there that look like crud.
Right.
You know?
I was just, it's just my opinion.
Okay, I'm done.
It's just my opinion.
Well, my opinion, everybody's got one. If I own a house, and I want to paint it, I'm going to paint it. If I have a house, I want to rent it, I'm going to get approval to rent it. I don't want to sit up here as an elected official and say, hey, you can't live in that house because we have this artificial plan down the road that we're going to change this into a business district, and this whole thing's going to be developed, and that's BS. This is somebody, I've heard it many times in this board, if you want it, control it, you buy it. Well, hey, they own it, and they own it, and they should be able to decide what they want, and if we have some piece of paper that says, in 20,000, 2027, we're going to change that into a Dairy Queen, I mean, that, that doesn't mean anything to me. I, I just feel I have a real problem that, that the village is going to tell somebody what they can do with their property, and if I was that owner, I would probably be up here at the speaker quite a bit, because I don't think that's right. I mean, they did buy it, they-
They would be, but I know that this one person happens to be out of town.
Well, it doesn't matter, to me is, to me, the question comes out, if somebody owns a piece of property, if it's in the village, if it's not really obnoxious, as if it's not doing something that's, you know, doing something illegal or something, why would we want to tell somebody, hey, because this is Heartland, you can't do it because we're going to put something in there someday? That's, that's BS for me, so, that's just my opinion. Yeah, but you could go either way with that PC, whether he wants to go, that you got business in the front and living up above.
You can live, you can live-
And that's what I thought when this came up.
You can currently live there.
Right.
Yeah. And that would help that area, and businesses seem to want to have a business and live above it, like the guy down the street from us.
Right.
Kind of.
No, I just, all I gave was my opinion.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
And it's not just because of the comprehensive plan, it's thinking about what's of Heartland, and we don't all have the same opinion on it, and that's okay, that's why we have a board of seven members.
As long as you're not turning it back into residential only.
That's what it's turning back into, that's what they're asking for.
Nor was it.
No, no, they're turning it, asking for residential only.
Oh, okay, then, that's the only place we can prove our business is down Cottonwood and-
That's what they're asking for.
So how far from the front door can she go?
I don't know the legit, I don't know.
Six feet, isn't it?
I don't know the exact on that.
I mean, that's crazy.
I, I don't know those specific areas.
Okay, we'll see what-
There's a motion on the floor to set a hearing.
Yeah, any other discussion on that? There's a motion on the floor to set the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
No. Or all, all opposed? Aye, sorry. The next part of that is a consideration of a motion, hold on a sec, oh, never mind, we set the public hearing, I'm sorry, I got myself all discombobulated, no. I'm not used to being up here with a difference of opinion from the board. Huh?
Did you read the first reading?
I believe I did it properly.
No, I mean, you set the hearing, but you go back to the-
I suppose you officially didn't acknowledge the first reading.
Okay, at this, since we've already set the public hearing for the first reading that has never been read, I'll do the first reading of a bill for an ordinance, number two-twenty-five, 2019 dash zero-one, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the Village of Heartland. And since that's the first reading, the public hearing has already been set. Thank you for the correction and touch. Other items on the agenda, we have a consideration of a motion denying the, denying the claim of WIPFLI LLC on behalf of Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly for refund of taxes paid on certain personal property because the claim was improperly served, was untimely in its filing, and it is questionable as to whether the recent extension of exemption under state statutes applies to the apparatus indicated in the claim. Our Director of Finance, Mr.-
Hello, everybody, yeah, we received the letter from Whifley LLC on approximately February 4th, came certified mail. As my memo states, there was a change in the law exempting some personal property, and Piggly Wiggly took some of the property that was on a different schedule and put it to the exempt schedule, and they're no different, there are many other grocers that have done this around the state. Our assessor disagreed with that, so moved it back off to put it to a taxable line, and thus it was taxed. So we have a couple of things at play here. This claim from Whifley on behalf of Fox Brothers was supposed to be served in person by January 31st to the clerk, that was not done properly and not done timely, and we also disagree that the refrigerators and freezers are machinery. That's, I guess that's what they're calling it instead of equipment. So I'll leave you with that, and you guys can-
So if you really got to find it again, if they were, is it a concern?
If, if you voted this down, their option would, I believe, be Circuit Court, some type of court, but then for next year, they could go to the open book and then possibly board a review here in a couple of months if they still disagree with that. There has been no court case for this, this was just changed last year. It just kind of opens up Pandora's boxes, what's equipment and what is machinery?
Well, I don't see how a refrigerator and freezer in a grocery store could be personal property under furniture fixtures and equipment, I mean, it's part of the store.
Right, that is the personal property, it's, any personal property is a property that makes the business run and function, without that, it wouldn't-
It's, uh, personal property of the business-
Yeah.
Right.
As opposed to real property. That's what the distinction is.
Okay.
So, you may, you probably don't recall, there used to be a time in Wisconsin when every taxpayer played, paid on personal property. So not only did businesses pay on their refrigerators and everything else, you and I would have paid on the tables and chairs and-
Furniture.
Furniture that we had in our home, in addition to the real estate value of the house itself.
Okay.
They eliminated that for residential properties decades ago, and you were probably a little girl.
I wasn't born yet then.
You probably weren't, and have kept it for, for businesses. That's the only distinction in the state of Wisconsin between a residential property taxpayer and a business property taxpayer, that's the only difference in how they pay taxes.
Okay.
Because they have that extra little bit of value that they pay on. And as Ryan mentioned, that some of that is being changed by the legislature, that whole concept of personal property tax is being whittled away by the state legislature, which, of course, slowly pushes then, drip by drip, taxes back onto the residential which of course slowly pushes then drip by drip taxes back onto the residential property owners. Nonetheless, there is a question, the fundamental question is whether these things are really exempt under the new law, and I think that that's something that we'll be dealing with in the upcoming year. Not only for Pigly Wiggly, but I suspect that that will slowly bleed out to Sendix and, you know, other owners that have refrigerators and then somebody else will get creative and say the slicers and.
Well, we have three refrigerators in our business.
Maybe they're exempt, I don't know.
And Dave, when I said where does it end? Because you look at.
Right.
Well, the court will.
Domino's Pizza has the machines that make the, is it machinery or is it equipment? So.
Where, where does it go from now?
Well, that's where we're going. It's, it's really unclear in the law. We talked to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. They could see it both ways. Now, they stated, and same with our attorneys, Hector from Von Bresen, the claim was untimely and improperly served. So it can be denied based on that. We also disagree that it's, we think it shouldn't be exempt, whereas Pigly Wiggly says it should be.
So if we deny it because he wasn't on time?
If we deny it, we would send a certified letter to Whifley and Fox Brothers Pigly Wiggly, letting them know why and when we, when we denied it. And then their option would be to.
Shout over.
To sue us, yeah, to take us to court.
And like I said, they'll probably change it on their, or have changed it on their form for this year. And through the process, through the normal process with the assessor and then perhaps with the Board of Review, a more informed decision can be made as to whether or not those things meet the definition. Hopefully by then, there'll be some guidance from the DOR that's been given out to the assessors to try and clear this mess up.
I can see that coming.
Brian. I think I get all this. If they sue us, it will probably cost the village more money in attorney fees than it will in extra tax.
If they did, but at that same token, then you could have Sendix, you could have all the others suddenly say, you know what, I agree, ours is unlawful as well.
Right. There you go. That's the Pandora's box. And we have to come up with four hundred grand.
The issue may come up in a, another court in another jurisdiction that would set precedent for us.
Well, you gotta, you gotta remember, point one here is it was served improperly and untimely.
Right.
It had to be January thirty-first in person, and it wasn't. And, and I'm not a stickler on that, but that's the law, that's what it's set. So in discussion with League and Hector, that's the first basis of why they would deny it. But there is no, there's no court hearing to say if it's equipment or machinery.
We'll take it to court in Wisconsin.
Correct.
Not necessarily against us.
And this is, according to the League, I believe there's twenty-six other municipalities that have had this happen with other grocers. It's not just Pigly Wiggly, so.
And if somebody will go to court and it will be decided.
Yep.
And then appealed. Or maybe it won't.
But then you think the thing would be is to deny it and let it come up, whatever happens between the state, maybe they'll solve it because it may have passed the law. Then we're stuck with all these other places. Every time Nick and Eric are gonna exempt, their corner little shed in the corner.
Ultimately, that's up to you, so we just, we received the notice.
I, I'm gonna go back to Ryan and state something. It wasn't received by the time that the law says that it was supposed to be received by. It wasn't in person.
And quit.
And if you do, no. Every single person, it's gonna be one busy year. Because every single business in Heartland that can save money by doing a change is gonna have, come forward, so we get a, get a really big dropout. Well.
That would be for next year's taxes.
Yeah. So I would think the best thing to do would be deny it and see what happens.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion?
I can make one, yeah.
And that was a second on his motion for denial? All in favor of denying, any other discussion? All in favor of denying the, denying the claim by WIPFLI LLC on behalf of Fox Brothers Pigly Wiggly for a refund of taxes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Just to clear, that motion was for the denial, so all the aye votes were to deny. Any others would be, I just want to make sure that's clear, sometimes that gets voted for a negative.
Yep, it is.
With that being said, we have a discussion and review of draft employee compensation plan policy. Go ahead.
So, uh, on a number of occasions, probably over the last, truly over the last couple of years during the budget process, there was some discussion about, um, creating a better policy for how employees get their raises annually. And, and so staff, management staff and, and I have met on a couple of occasions regarding this, and we reviewed, uh, some language that has been put together in a policy for the village board to consider. And basically, under the program that we've developed, at least in draft form at this point, is a, um, is a two-tiered merit-based increase. The village board would annually continue to set a cost of living adjustment, and then beyond that, employees who are still able to move through their range, where there's still room in the range to which their position is assigned in the pay system, could, could receive a, an increase up to five percent. And that is tied to a performance evaluation, and the extraordinary employee would be getting the five percent, the employee who is doing what we want them to do and is consistent could be potentially in the three percent range, and those that are struggling would be below that and perhaps, perhaps nothing.
Is that, when I read that and I can agree with it, the only thing I thought, if, if he's not doing a job, he doesn't get a raise, what are we got him for?
Well, and, and.
It can be worded.
Certainly there is an argument for that.
Yeah. I'm just saying if it's worded that way, instead of saying he isn't up to. I thought when you put it in there, if he's no good, he don't get a raise.
Most likely, and I can just speak from experience, and this goes in whether it seems to be how we do things, or whether it is running a business, most likely you're only gonna have one review where you don't get a raise.
Yeah.
Because you won't be coming back for the next review, usually. Or you're gonna have really stepped up your game and you'll be coming back for the next one. If you're in the middle of the process, we don't just decide in an instant to let someone go. You know, we've kind of talked about, you know, verbal warnings, written warnings. If you're in the middle of that process, that's all part of the HR process.
I would just thought of that word, that's, otherwise I don't because I was in the engineers' arena and they just went in and everybody got the twenty-five cents. And we had that same problem, one guy didn't do anything.
Sure.
And you already got, and the other guy was carrying that, but he couldn't get any more and he couldn't get any less.
Right, and, but this isn't union.
No, no, I just, no, I don't want to get involved with union.
I know what you're saying, though.
I was wondering whether that could be worded different.
Sure.
That, you know, that he, he was not, he might be good and he might be lazy, but when he finds out that he didn't pass the, the thing, maybe you're percolating, you don't want to get rid of him.
Right. And to add on that, that's what tonight is for, so that everybody had the chance. I mean, obviously, everybody's been able to read it, but now you guys will be able to give your input back so that, uh, you know, next meeting maybe, um, we can give our input so that we can have it written in, in the way that the board wants to see it.
Right.
That's the only thing, that's the only thing I didn't like. I mean, I would question this.
Sure.
Well, I have a question. What in, in C under performance reviews, what's the difference between a regular employee and then all employee evaluations? What's the difference between the two?
So a regular employee is employee, is officially is an employee who has completed their, uh, is two, two things. One, they've completed their orientation period, so they're a full-fledged regular employee. And that's also opposed to seasonal employee or, um, other kinds of.
Full-time. So full-time and through their probationary.
Not necessarily full-time, you could be a regular part-time employee as well. But a regular employee is defined as a person who has finished their orientation period and is not a sort of temporary class of employee like a seasonal.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions. The administration, uh, the village administrator shall determine the specific amounts of salary adjustments to be provided for the individual employees consistent with this and other applicant policies established by the village board. The administrator is not doing it, the village board is saying this is, this is the guidelines, not the administrator, right? But you're saying, but the way it's written here is that the village administrator is gonna take what we say and determine how he wants to do it. I don't think that's right. The second thing here is, uh, the administrator shall be responsible for preparing recommendations of cost analysis relative to revisions of the plan. Well, that should all be done when it comes to, okay, here's what we, this is the guidelines, what we want to do. And then performance reviews, for the purpose of consistency as it related to performance reviews and any adjustments in salary tied to reviews, all regular employees will be evaluated on the period October first through September thirtieth. All employee evaluations will be completed by December thirty-first of each year of the previous period. It's, I, they're gonna, we're doing evaluation on the end of the, by the end of the year, but we're gonna evaluate them in October through, you know, by the end of October through September. Kind of confusing there, I would think that when you have an employee re-evaluation and review, that that number should be established. The, um, I'm a little confused with the, um, performance reviews aren't intended to be performed by the employee's direct supervisor and other supervision, supervisory staff, including department manager in respective departments. Well, I would think that any evaluation that is gonna be done on an employee should be done by his direct supplier, or supervisor, and that should be the, the guidelines, um, not coming down. It seems like it's getting down all the way here and all of a sudden, we're saying, oh yeah, it's gotta be done, although you don't have any idea, you can't control how much is gonna go, you have to do that evaluation. So that, I didn't care for that. And upon completion, the annual review shall be forwarded to the individual administrator for review. So after the supervisor would evaluate the activity of that particular employee, then it's gotta go and say, this is what I believe, and then they're gonna take it to the administrator. The administrator says, that guy really isn't that good, so I don't think we're gonna give him that. That's not gonna work. So I, I, I don't think that's right. Employees, uh, existing standard, uh, reviews, performance can receive up to a five percent increase. And first, and then employees that, uh, who are meeting standards may re, uh, receive up to three percent. Well, if you look at, of an increase from three to five percent, and if you look here for the last ten or fifteen years, I can't remember ever giving a five percent increase to anybody in the complete board, or employees. And so if we're gonna, and we're looking at like two, there's been many years we have in Oak increases, there's been most of them two year, two percent or three percent, all of a sudden, we jumped this up, we've multiplied it up to five and three. If you look at a, at a five percent increase on a thirty thousand dollar employee, you're looking at, at that increase, what about the employee with that, we say, okay, for the whole village, we're gonna go up three percent? So the whole village is gonna go up three percent, and old Mike here is doing a great job, he's getting that extra five, so he went up eight percent. That's not quite the, the idea that I was, I was thinking about this. The new employee thing is, I don't know what, I, I haven't figured that one out yet. But those are just a couple of things I had to question some.
I have one more thing on mine. On the next paragraph where you left off, Mike, job descriptions, I think added in there, reevaluation of job descriptions may be requested by position incumbents, their department heads, or the village administrator. I think we should add it in there or the village board.
Okay.
Well, job description, I don't know how anybody but the person who's, who he's working for can have, can have a, a job description for an employee.
Sometimes somebody will come to us because they, they don't maybe want to talk to their supervisor. And maybe we look at it and talk to somebody and we could say, you know, I want to make a request that this is looked at.
But then would you, if somebody comes to you that doesn't like their supervisor and you agree to give him four percent over?
No, 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 I'm not saying I'm doing, I'm talking about job description.
Yeah, okay.
Just what their job is. If they come to us, that we could say, um, okay, let's have our administrator or their supervisor, you know, look into this.
Sure.
And come back to us.
And again, tonight was just to read and, and look, so everybody's got a shot at this, so they got a month that we can all, I have my own stuff that I'm gonna be, I've already kind of said. I had some real minor tweaks that I saw, uh, you know, so you have one month. How are we doing this? However much time you need, but I mean, get, I would sooner rather than later, you know, let the village administrator know so that we can get some re-wordings, and Mike, if you could put that into writing and send it in, this, the whole point tonight was to let the public know we're doing something, we've been really headed towards a merit-based or wanting to get towards a merit-based. Now, that cost of living would be gone, but we're gonna, I want, me personally, I want to see it more taken off the board and put on the people that are dealing with the day-to-day, you know, supervisor or the boots on the ground. So, uh, but does anybody, do you, this side of the board didn't say much, other than, Mike, did you guys have anything that you wanted to add publicly right now, either one of you?
Not this time.
I just briefly read over it and I see a few things that need to be addressed, but that being said, I like the overall concept of it as well, that the department heads actually get to control the raises.
Right.
Besides the cost of living. I mean, that's how it should be. And they can control it.
Right.
And I believe it's budgeted in. I mean, it's not like it's a surprise that they figure out what it's gonna be, so.
You'll end up finding out, I was talking with Administrator Cox, and what will end up happening is that, the nice thing for us, at budget time, if they're doing, you know, what that is going to be on what they intend for raises, let's say it's, I'll pull in, let's just say DPW, because it's a really large department, but let's say they say, okay, we're gonna have, you know, whatever it is, uh, fifty thousand dollars in raises. Now, for anybody that hears that and thinks that's very large, there's a lot of people working in DPW, but let's say they just say fifty thousand additional dollars into the payroll for DPW, they would present that at the time of their budget, so we would see merit and, say, cost of living, whatever, something like that, so.
And then the final thing is, Dick, for your comment of that if they wouldn't get a raise, I mean, then I, again, it would be the department heads that would do a PIP, a performance evaluation where they would have to improve, or that maybe they wouldn't have a job anymore. But I mean, that's what goes with that, of not getting it and then realizing why you're not, and then how you can improve time. And I think that's really important, that all of our department heads actually have that control as well.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at, that you might be lazy and if I picked it up or something, and you might be good.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't wanna.
No, we.
You know.
We'll have time to get this thing worked out. I do want to commend kind of the fact that, I mean, at least we're getting, we've been saying we wanted to head in this direction, and I do like that we're working in that direction. I think that's all this was kind of tonight, a little brainstorming, doing it publicly, letting people hear the direction we're going, uh, and we'll be able to kind of, everybody can give their feedback to the administrator, we'll keep working it.
Yeah, I think that's what we're after.
I, I think you're, if you have people that are doing a good job, unless it's a very small minority, giving five percent and the cost of living increase to all the employees, I, I think it's, as, as a practical matter, budgetarily, we're gonna have to set up pots for incentives.
I don't think any intention of this document shows that everyone would get a five percent and a, and a three percent increase. It would be impossible to do it because if someone's at the top, someone's at the bottom.
Somebody maybe shouldn't even get the whole cost of living increase.
I'm not disagreeing.
And I'm, I'm saying that, um, that yes, we need an incentive. I, I think that's important, but we don't have unlimited funds. So it almost has to come partially from the unachievers to go to the overachievers.
I'm, I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you. I'm in agreement with you. Some people, they should get nothing extra. Some people should get more than others because they're really putting their time in.
Shouldn't necessarily go to everybody.
And will, I'll end up addressing that, I'm in agreement with you. I think that should be up to the supervisor to say, hey, whatever.
Uh, just real quick, I know you'd mentioned the September, or the October through September thing. The thought behind that timeline is that we could have it in the budget so that people had an idea of how much money, so that's why we wanted, it's a year, so regardless of if we do December to December, we picked, when we had a staff meeting, that's why we chose that. The reason that, uh, I think Dave had in there, a due date of December thirty-first is the police department has twenty different evaluations they do, the fire department has sixty, I have two. So I'll, I should be able to get mine today very shortly after that, but I think the thought is, give them until the end of the year. But, so we have an idea while we're doing the budget of how much people are gonna be asking, so we can put those numbers in there. Because kind of like you've all hinted at, I mean, if, whatever it comes down to a bucket or if we are predetermined what we think it's gonna be, um, we don't have endless funds. So if you have one department head trying to give everyone a five percent raise, that's gonna be very difficult for the budget.
Cuts from somewhere else, so you can't, the funds don't come out of.
The department head's not gonna have a good review.
Come on the nerves, right?
Well, it'll be a bad year.
So, but joking aside, everybody, this was to, you know, get that convo started. Sounds like everybody, you know, talk with the administrator, he has, I mean, he'll take time, you can go down there, sit and talk with him, you can email him, um, you know, brainstorm it a little bit, and we'll come up, we'll get something right. It always takes a start, you gotta take that first step on that thousand-mile journey, so we've taken that first step. Does anybody, uh, with that, any, are we done with that? Are you guys good with that convo? Okay. So with that item being done, we move on to our, our announcements, I'm sure we're gonna have a few. I'll just say, there was an event that was held in Milwaukee, or for a Milwaukee police officer that was shot and killed, um, this past weekend over at Hideside Tactics over on Industrial Drive. on Industrial Drive. I just, it was really, it was really moving to see so many people come out to the community, so many different officers. An officer from Chicago came up playing the bagpipes, and it's my understanding the Chicago PD paid to send him up and, and do that. It was, it was really beautiful. It was, it was just very moving. So, to all of you that put your life on the line, it does happen where sometimes someone doesn't get to go home at night. And we're lucky to have our resident here, but there is a wife and a child who doesn't have their dad coming home, who went to serve a warrant in Milwaukee. People do die when they're fighting fires, or when they're going and serving warrants, or even when they're just pulling cars over, it happens. So, it was very moving to see Heartland step up and do that, and I think it's just a testament to who we are as a community. So, my hat's off to our fire department, our police department, and that entire event. We looked good, Heartland, we really did. So, I don't have any other announcements. I just, I commend this whole village, but especially our first responders. Any other announcement? Nada?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, we adjourned.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourned the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.